Please remain standing for a minute of prayer and meditation. The majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the calling of the roll of members.
Any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abaya. Abayon. Abilianosa. Abu. Abu Ek. Akop. Akosta. Akosta Alba. Ajong. Adbingkula. Agarau. Agabau. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alkala. Alehano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantellion. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aquino Magcaysay. Aragonés. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsensah. Aumentado. Bagau. Bakajing. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batukabe. Bautista Bandigan. Bilaro. Belmonte Filiçano. Belmonte Jose Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Bilyones. Birón. Bulilia. Bundok. Bordado. Bravo Andri. Bravo Meribida. Brosas. Bulut Miktang. Kagas. Kalalang. Calderón. Calixterubiano. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casa Franz. Casa Fredenil. Katambo. Cayetano. Celeste. Serapika. Siriles. Chávez. Chipeco. Co. Coango. Culiantes. Cortés. Cortuna. Osalan. Crisoloco. Kuwa. Quaresma. Cueba. Dalipe. Datol. Daza. Jesús. De Venesia. De Vera. Defensor. Delmar. Delgasario. Delo Samantalia. Dimaporo Dula. Dimaporo Khalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erice. Ergel. Hermita Boyín. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Eusebio. Evardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Feriol Pascual. Florrendo. Flores. Fortún. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. García Gwendolin. García Jose. García Albano. Gary Richard. Gary Sharon. Gasataya. Gachalian. Heron. Guano Cristina. Go Mark. Gómez. Gonzaga. González Alexandria. González Aurelio Dong. González Fernando. Goriseta. Gulyas. Hernández. Herrera Di. Hofer. Halosos. Co. Congun. Labad Labad. Lakson. Lagman. Lanete. Laugán. Lasatin. Lia Chon. Li. Limcaichong. Lubrigat. López Benur. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Bakapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Mangutadatus Huarto. Mangutadatus Sajid. Marcoleta. Marcos. Marino. Marques. Martínez. Matugas. Millana. Mendín. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malenyáon. Wominal. Okampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Paciau. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicia Segabás. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramiresato. Ramos. Relampagos. Rivilla. Ropuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque. Sakdalan. Sagarberia. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangon. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sandoval. Sangkopan. Santos Rekto. Sarmiento César. Sarmiento Edgar. Sevillano. Semah. Xiau. Silverio. Singson. Swan Singestrita. Suansinguraso. Suárez. Sielbarado. Tambunting. Tanangelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves. Changko. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Ti. Umalí. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Beretta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Velasco. Velasco Caterra. Veloso. Bergara. Villa Fuerte. Villa Nueva. Villa Rasa Suárez. Villa Rica. Villa Rin. Viulago. Yap Arthur. Yap Mylesio. Yap Victor. Yu. Semora Marcamin. Semora Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 231 members responded to the call.
With 231 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, considering that copies of the journal of the previous session have been distributed to the members, I move that we dispense with the reading of the journal.
Mr. Speaker. Any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of Journal of the previous session, Journal number 5, dated July 31, 2018.
Any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of Journal of the previous session, Journal number 5, dated July 31, 2018.
Any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Nolasco, Vargas Alfonso, Ting, and Antonio, Honorable Melvin Boy Vargas, Vice Governor of the Province of Cagayan.
Please rise for recognition. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
As well as the President of the Associations of Barangay Chairman of the Province of Cagayan, led by ex-official provincial board member Brian Paul Vargas.
Please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, may I move to recognize the guests of the Honorable Jeffrey Congun, the Officers of Subikenya Municipal Level of Municipality of Subic Zambales, led by its President Sylvia Del Pozo.
Please rise.
Welcome to the House of Representatives. And may also please recognize the guests of the Honorable Seth Frederick Halosos, the Association of Civil Registrar, Inc. of Region, eleven-headed by their regional president, Mr. Samson Baryentos.
Please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with a reference of business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Any objection?
Mr. Speaker.
The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I objected because I have been seeking...
House Bill 7967, establishing the government internship program, Representative Kuwa.
Mr. Speaker, I have been trying to seek recognition from the chair. That's not the chair here that I am seeking recognition from the chair.
We will recognize after the reference of business.
Thank you.
Congressman, uh...
Raúl Daza.
We will recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
To the Committee on Civil Service.
House Bill 7968, creating the Department of Disaster Resilience, Representative Romualdes.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 7969, appropriating the sum of one...
To the Committee on Appropriation.
House Bill 7970...
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 7970, appropriating 200 million.
To the Committee on Justice. To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7974, abending RA in number 1078.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 7975, amending sections 1 and 2 of RA 1035.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 7976, providing for the construction of public restrooms.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 7977, requiring the PCSO to print a lot of tickets.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
Resolutions. House Resolutions 2031, expressing the full support of the House.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Resolution 2032, congratulating and commending the agency.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 2033, urging the House Committee on Games and Amusements.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2034, directing the Committee on Justice.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2035, directing the Committee on Rivers.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2036, expressing deepest condolences.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2037, expressing deepest condolences.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated July 34 in the House of the Senate, passed Senate Bill 1391.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated August 1, informing the House that on July 31...
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications, letter dated March 14.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
Letter dated May 28, Commissioner Oase Koa.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated 14 June 2018.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated 18 June 2018 of Chairperson Koa.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated June 18, Nelozo.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated June 20, 22 and 27.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Chairperson Koa.
Letter dated 22 June. To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated June 25.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
Letter dated June 25, Neda.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated June 26, Water District.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated June 26, 28.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated June 27, 28.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
Letter dated June 28, Secretary DND.
To the Committee on Cooperative Development.
Letter dated June 29, Carpanco.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated June 29, Secanco.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated 4 July, Dayangirang.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letters dated 5 and 17 July 2018.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Report on Fund Utilization and Status Program.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
AAR on Barbasa Water District.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
AAR Colasi Water District.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
AAR on Jordan Water District.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
AAR on Zaraga Water District.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
AAR on Subic Bay Metropolitan Authority.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
AAR on Ramon Magcaysay Technical University.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
AAR on Mindanao Development Authority.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
AAR on DAVO Integrated Development Program.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
AAR on Dr. Emilio Espinoza.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Consolidated Audit Report.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
NTRC Tax Research Journal.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
Reporter of Attorney Cesar State Perez, Secretary General of the Bureau.
To the Archives.
2017 AAR on various water districts.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
2017 AAR...
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Report, Report 807.
To the Committee on Rules. The chair now recognizes Congressman Daza. Congressman Daza, you are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, the commencement of the session began today, which is 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Now, I understand that sometime on Wednesday last week, the rules had been amended, specifically Rule 11, Section 10, in order that the commencement be... of the session be at 3 o'clock this afternoon. Now, it does not personally affect me because I came at 3 and the roll call will show that I am present, but I would like, Mr. Speaker, to speak in behalf of the 63 who are absent today. Some of them may not have been informed of the amendment of the rules, and especially if they're coming from the provinces, they would not be able to answer the roll this afternoon. So, I would like to appeal, in the interest of fairness, to those members who are not able to come at 3 o'clock, that a second call be made at 4 o'clock. That's the reason why I had been trying to gain recognition from the chair. I'm just appealing, not for myself, but for the sake of those members, in fairness to them, who have not been... who are not here at the time of the amendment of the rules last Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader, will you respond to the manifestation of Congressman Daza?
Mr. Speaker, as far as I can recall, this was moved by the Majority Leader last Wednesday to the body, and the body approved it without any objection. Unfortunately, the Honorable Daza was unable to see that processing of that motion, but as far as the Majority Leader is concerned, it was already officially moved and it was approved by the body. Now, I understand that sometime on Wednesday last week, the rules had been amended, specifically Rule 11, Section 10, in order that the commencement be of the session be at 3 o'clock this afternoon. Now, it does not personally affect me because I came at 3 and the roll call will show that I am present. But I would like, Mr. Speaker, to speak in behalf of the 63 who are absent today. Some of them may not have been informed of the amendment of the rules and especially if they're coming from the provinces, they would not be able to answer the roll this afternoon. So, I would like to appeal, in the interest of fairness, to those members who are not able to come at 3 o'clock, that a second call be made at 4 o'clock. That's the reason why I had been trying to gain recognition from the Chair. I'm just appealing, not for myself, but for the sake of those members, in fairness to them, who have not been, who are not here at the time of the amendment of the rules last Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader, will you respond to the manifestation of Congressman Daza?
Mr. Speaker, as far as I can recall, this was moved by the Majority Leader last Wednesday to the Body and the Body approved it without any objection. Unfortunately, the Honorable Daza was unable to see that processing of that motion. But as far as the Majority Leader is concerned, Your Honor, it was already officially moved and it was approved by the Body because there was no objection.
No, I knew about, Mr. Speaker. I knew about the motion and that's the reason why I'm here today at 3 o'clock sharp. I'm speaking on behalf of those who were not here that evening and who have not been able to come on time for the roll call at 3 o'clock this afternoon and I'm appealing to the discretion of the Chair and the Majority Leader to have a second roll call at 4 o'clock. That's all, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much for the concern, Mr. Speaker, but as shown by the number who appeared today, there are 231 who answered or responded to the call because there was a notice subsequently dispensed by the office to notify all members. That's why we had the majority today. That's the pack, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, I'm appealing for the 63 who have just been marked absent, especially those who are coming from the provinces.
If the Majority Leader doesn't want to accede to my request, then let it be put on record that my request, not on my behalf, but on behalf of the other members, especially those coming from the provinces, has been turned down by the majority. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If the Chair may comment, those who come late and as soon as they approach the Secretariat, their attendance will be checked as present. They are not marked absent the moment that they arrive. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I rise on a question of privilege? On July 30, 2018, the Majority Leader recognized the Honorable Danilo Suarez as the Minority Leader. That action of the Majority Leader was questioned on the floor and it gave rise to what appeared to be a three-cornered fight for the position of Minority Leader. Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, this internal squabble was picked up by and fisted on by the media. And by the way, it is being hyped today. It is directly affecting the integrity and reputation of this House, including its members, either individually or collectively. But the action taken by the Majority Leader, Mr. Speaker, is legally tenable. It must be explained, however. There are two instances why the House votes for a Speaker. This is clearly provided under Rule 3, Section 11, First Paragraph. The first is at the commencement of every session. The second is whenever there is a vacancy. Two years ago, Mr. Speaker, may I stress that? Two years ago, during our inaugural session, there can be no dispute that those who voted for the winning Speaker, the Honorable Alvarez, constituted the majority. At that time, Mr. Speaker, it was necessary to draw the line because the House had to be organized. But two weeks ago, may I emphasize that again, Mr. Speaker? Two weeks ago, what happened is a different matter altogether. It was when we needed to vote again for another Speaker because the office of the incumbent was declared vacant. The House voted again for a Speaker not because it needed to organize, but because there is a need to fill up a vacancy. Rule 11, last paragraph, Section 11, I suppose, last paragraph Rule 3 of our rules provides. Whenever there is a vacancy, the Speaker shall be elected by a majority of all members. Mr. Speaker, the rule simply provided that this prospective Speaker must get a majority vote of all the members in order to be elected. It did not say that those who voted to elect a new Speaker has formed a new set of majority. The argument of the Honorable Kimbo and the Honorable De Vera that members who vote for the winning candidate for a Speaker shall constitute the majority invoking Section 8 of our rules cannot be applied when members vote in order to fill up a vacancy. If we do that and if we interpret it that way, I'm afraid, Mr. Speaker, that such an argument may require the widest stretch of imagination. May I explain further? The Majority Leader maintains and so holds that the reasoning advanced by the Honorable Kimbo and De Vera strictly applies only during the commencement of its Congress, at which time the Body has to actively or actively organize. The change in leadership that took place two weeks ago, on the other hand, did not require the House to organize again. The House is organized when the vacancy occurred. If we follow the Section 8 argument, Mr. Speaker, it will lead us to many absurd situations. First.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker.
There will never be an instance where a minority leader
Point of order, Mr. Speaker.
can participate in ousting an incumbent Speaker.
What's the point of order?
Mr. Chair, he's the Majority Leader talking as a Congressman or a Majority Leader because his personal privilege was not yet recognized by the Speaker. My, thank you.
The Chair now recognizes Congressman Marcoletta.
As I was saying, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. If we follow the Section 8 argument of the Honorable Kimbo and Honorable De Vera, we will lead to many absurd situations. First, there will never be an instance where a minority leader can participate in ousting an incumbent Speaker without losing his position. I ask the Honorable Kimbo the following question. Is there any other way for Mr. Suarez to formally manifest his desire to change the House members' leadership without voting for the candidate who eventually wins? His reply, he should have abstained. Mr. Speaker, if Mr. Suarez abstained from voting, does that mean that he has conveyed his wish to change the Speaker? Obviously, the answer is no. Because if he abstained, he did nothing, practically nothing. I also had the chance of asking the Honorable De Vera this question. What could have happened if Speaker Gloria Macapagal Arroyo did not get the majority vote required to be elected? His reply, nominate another candidate. With all due respect, Mr. Speaker, I think this answer is inaccurate. It is the position of the Majority Leader that if Mr. Suarez, together with his team in the minority, chose to abstain from voting, like what the group of the Honorable Kimbo did and Speaker GMA failed to get the majority vote, the motion to vacate would have been defeated and Honorable Alvarez would have stayed as the Speaker. And if Mr. Alvarez regained his position under such scenario, the Honorable De Vera and Kimbo will perhaps admit that the group of Honorable Suarez indirectly supported the majority. And following the argument that misplaced argument based on Section 8, will not Mr. Suarez still lose his minority post for virtually supporting the incumbent to retain the speakership? It is respectfully submitted, Mr. Speaker, that this "dumb if you do, dumb if you don't" dilemma was never intended by our rules insofar as the post of Minority Leader is concerned. It is our humble view that our rules never contemplated a situation that the minority leader will stay a lame duck or relegated to a disinterested bystander at a time of a crucial, so crucial that there is a major shift in the House leadership that is taking place. Mr. Speaker, Section 8 should not be interpreted in a way that could lead us not only in absurdity but also in serious inconvenience. Argumentum ab inconveniente plurimum vale in legge. A variant of this legal maxim is much simpler. It says this way. The inconvenience that a proposed interpretation may cause is a serious reason to discard it. The truth is, when the Honorable Suarez opted to support and vote for Speaker GMA, all that he wanted was a change in leadership. This is a right that he can exercise as a member of this House when vacancy arises in House speakership. After all, the rule says all members, without any distinction as to majority or minority. Mr. Suarez did not have to change his color because such political exercise is colorblind. And so, Mr. Speaker, it is as clear as the midday sun. There is no blue corner. There is no red corner. Neither a yellow corner. The truth is, the minority belt was never disputed. The champion is still the Honorable Suarez on record. I therefore move, Mr. Speaker, that the Body vote to confirm the act of the Majority Leader of recognizing Mr. Suarez as the Minority Leader. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection?
Objection.
Objection, Mr. Speaker.
Objection, Mr. Speaker.
Congressman. There's no business for the Majority Leader to determine who is the Minority Leader. It confirms our suspicion that the minority is the majority's favorite.
Congressman Eresia has not been recognized. The Chair recognizes Congressman Kimbo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, we object. What we have before, the legislative status is that there is a privileged speech delivered by the Minority Leader. I am sorry, by the Majority Leader. And the such a privileged speech cannot ripen into a motion. The action is whether he is open to interpolation or are we going to refer to the appropriate committee? And so I object to the motion for being out of order, Mr. Chair.
Is the gentleman, is the Majority Leader open to interpolation?
I'm always open to interpolation, Mr. Speaker, however, there is a motion. The parliamentary status is there is a motion to confirm the action taken by the Majority Leader in recognizing the Honorable Suarez as Minority Leader. I think we should have to divide the House because the Body has to vote.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, Mr. Speaker.
Congressman Kimbo, you are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, this is not to in any way obviate or prevent that motion from being presented at the appropriate time and for us to raise the appropriate objections, but let's proceed according to our rules.
The Chair sustains. Congressman Kimbo, we will first go to interpolation. Anyone who is interested to interpolate the Majority Leader.
I'm interested to interpolate the Majority Leader, Mr. Speaker.
Congressman Daza, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ah, Mr. Speaker, let me preface my interpolation by putting in record my astonishment, if not my consolation, in the fact that it is the Majority Leader who now stands on the floor to defend the position of the group of Congressman Danny Suarez. I hope it's not, it doesn't imply that there is truth to the rumor or the innuendos that this is now proof that the so-called minority group of Congressman Suarez is essentially and veritably, if not a part of, very submissive and dependent on the majority. Let me just ask these questions now of the learned Majority Leader. Is it not a fact that Section 8, insofar as the question of the minority and the Minority Leader is concerned, has already been the subject of a decision by the Supreme Court? Yes, I have a question and I I would like the the Justice Majority Leader to answer the question.
May I have the question again, Mr. Speaker?
I will repeat the question. My question is, isn't it a fact that Section 8 of the rules adverted to by the gentleman has already been the subject of interpretation by the Supreme Court through a decision?
Mr. Speaker, if you're referring to a case which was filed by the group of the Honorable Lagman to which you are a member, that particular case, Mr. Speaker, related itself to the inaugural session of this Congress. It did not in any way point to another to another opportunity where this Body has to vote again for a Speaker because there was a vacancy. So if the question is, if I know that Section 8 was passed upon by the Supreme Court in one case, yes, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, it was, but that was precisely during an inaugural session when this Body has to organize.
Does the gentleman recall that this is the case of Bagila et al. versus Alvarez et al. GR number 227757.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Promulgated on July 25, 2017.
That is the one we are referring to, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor.
Does not the gentleman recall that the gist of the decision was that the Supreme Court upheld the position taken on the floor by the then Majority Leader Fariñas in regard to the interpretation of Section 8? Does he recall that?
I know that, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. That is precisely I'm trying to make a distinction. During the inaugural session of this House, you will note that were at least two candidates. The Honorable Alvarez and the Honorable Suarez, as well as the Honorable Bagila. So there were three candidates at that time.
Not two.
Not two.
Yes.
And so, it happened that the Honorable Speaker Alvarez won. They, and he was elected Speaker of this House. And by virtue of that rule, all those who voted for the winning candidate And by virtue of that rule, all those who voted for the winning candidate shall constitute themselves as members of the majority. As a matter of fact, I know because we were in one group then, Mr. Speaker, your honor, the thing that complicated the issue was the clarification made on the floor, as I recall, by my friend, the former Majority Leader, when Honorable Atienza took the floor by way of a parliamentary inquiry, asking precisely what will happen to the members who will not vote or will abstain from voting. And the Honorable Fariñas, as I can recall, qualified that all those who will abstain from voting and those who will not vote will automatically become members of the minority. You and I questioned that, Mr. Speaker, your honor, because that was not provided by the rules. I know, because I remember when I stood the floor and questioned that, the Honorable Fariñas said, "Oh, nobody objected anyway, including you." You did not object. I said I did not object because I thought that was only an opinion, because an opinion, whether articulated wrongly or rightly, nobody has to object. Everybody else is entitled to his own opinion. I thought it was an opinion, but you know, the Supreme Court ruled because there was a clarification. Two weeks ago, we did not have that situation, Mr. Speaker. There is no such clarification. Why? Because we are not supposed to organize. We were organized when the office of the Speaker was declared vacant. That's a different matter altogether, Mr. Speaker. This is what I'm trying to explain. When I stood the floor, I said, "I rise on a question of privilege," because I do not want this body... The hype now going on in the media is that it is directly affecting the reputation and integrity of this House, not to mention the members. You and I, and the members now seated in this august hall, we have to intervene. Our position only is to confirm the recognition made by the Honorable Rolando Andaya, our Majority Leader, recognizing the Honorable Suarez. We are not disputing here who is the best Minority Leader. Maybe the red corner, the blue corner, or the yellow corner. Maybe they have better ideas, but that is not the issue. The only issue is we're trying to confirm a position taken by a Majority Leader because this House, whatever it comes, need to buckle down to work, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
No. In relation to the answer of the gentleman, Mr. Speaker, may I ask the gentleman whether he recalls that the very body of the decision of the Supreme Court quoted the statement of the then-Majority Leader Fariñas in regard to the interpretation of Section 8? And the Supreme Court quoted verbatim as follows: Representative Fariñas then articulated that (a) all those who vote for the winning Speaker shall belong to the majority, and those who vote for other candidates shall belong to the minority;[764.63][764.63](b) those who abstain from voting shall likewise be considered part of the minority;[772.43][772.43](c) the minority leader shall be elected by the members of the minority. These were the words of Congressman Fariñas, quoted by approval by the Supreme Court and contained in the body of the decision. Does the gentleman remember that?
I remember that by heart, Mr. Speaker, your honor. But I said, there is a distinction. We were organizing at the time, and it's proper that we should identify who are the members of the minority and the members of the majority. So we have to start with Section 8. We were there two years ago, but what we are trying to process now is the situation two weeks ago, not two years ago. When there is no clarification needed, we do not have to clarify who's going to vote. The rule simply says, the prospective Speaker, on account of a vacancy, must get the majority vote. It does not say that those who will vote will be siding, will be, will again be the members of the majority, no. It's precisely the fact that the majority vote must be obtained to get elected, otherwise, as I had said, the motion to vacate will be defeated. And by operation of law, the incumbent will retake the position. That is a fact, Mr. Speaker. So we were only trying to explain that it is not correct that if the Honorable Speaker Gurema Kapagalario failed to get, we will again vote, we will again nominate and then vote. That is not the rule, Mr. Speaker, your honor. It is very simple.
Would the gentleman please point to me any part of the decision of the Supreme Court in the case of Bagilat that makes a distinction between the election of the Speaker at the commencement of the Congress, when the House convinced to organize, and whenever a vacancy occurs? Would the gentleman point to me from the decision itself whether that distinction was made by the Supreme Court or not?
Mr. Speaker, that decision was made because it pointed to the very time when we organized two years ago. It cannot be applied to what happened two weeks ago because it was not the factual issue. The factual issue was that we were organizing two years ago. That is why we had a case that was filed by the independents, including yourself, Mr. Speaker, your honor. So it is the case itself that distinguishes the facts between what happened two years ago and what happened two weeks ago. So what happened two years ago cannot make, to be applied in this scenario that came in two weeks ago, because two weeks ago we were just filling up a vacancy. Two years ago, we were supposed to organize. So there was the problem of being able to identify who are the majority and the members of the majority. It was only complicated by the opinion that those who abstain from voting or those who did not vote are automatically members of the minority. You know the rules, Mr. Speaker, your honor. That particular statement cannot be found and cannot be supported by the rule. Our rule is very silent on that aspect. It does not follow that if you abstain from voting or you did not vote at all, you are automatically member of the minority. That is not in the rule.
That's not in the rules. That's why the case went up to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court interpreted the rules. Well, in other words, in other words, from the answer of the gentleman, the Supreme Court did not make any distinction. It is the learned gentleman who is making the distinction. But in his statement on a question of privilege, he quoted Rule 3, Section 11 of the Rules. And I would like to read it. It's short, before I ask the question. Section 11, Election of Officers, the pertinent portions only. Quote, "At the commencement of each Congress, the Speaker shall be elected by a majority vote of all the members, and the Secretary General shall record the vote of each member, which shall be cast without explanation." Then, in a later paragraph, "Likewise, whenever there is a vacancy, the Speaker shall be elected by a majority vote of all the members, and the Secretary General shall record the vote of each member, which shall be cast without explanation." It must be expressed that Section 11 does not make any distinction between the election and the results of the election for Speaker at the commencement of the Congress and whenever there is a vacancy. In fact, the rule says likewise, and the very similarity of how the votes will be cast and that the vote should be without explanation are identical. So from Section 11 of Rule 3, there is no distinction. In other words, the Supreme Court in that case of Bagilat did not make any distinction. Our own rules, which I have read verbatim, Section 11, does not make any distinction. Therefore, we should not make any distinction. As the Latin maxim reads, as the Latin maxim says, "Ube lex non-distinguit, nec neus distinguere debemos." Translated into English, it says, "Where the law does not distinguish, neither should we distinguish." And therefore, I see no basis or reason for the distinguished gentleman, no matter how learned he is, to make any distinction. The Supreme Court does not make any distinction. Rule 3, Section 11, neither makes any distinction, but it is only the gentleman who is, however, I believe, learned, who makes the distinction. But between the opinion of the distinguished gentleman, Mr. Speaker, and the opinion and ruling of the Supreme Court and the traditional Latin maxim to which I adverted, and the very language of our rules, I would at this moment give more weight to not distinguishing, even if I highly caress the erudition of distinguished gentlemen on the floor who makes a distinction. And that's the reason why, Mr. Speaker, I'm constrained to stand on the floor to vigorously object to the motion now before the House, for the House to render formal recognition to the so-called minority group of my friend, the distinguished gentleman from question, the Honorable Danilo Suarez and his group. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, distinguished Majority Leader.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker?
The gentleman from Ilocos Norte is hereby recognized.
The gentleman yielded to a few questions, Mr. Speaker, because my name was dragged several times in his speech.
How can I refuse my friend, Mr. Speaker?
May I proceed, Mr. Speaker?
You may proceed, Congressman Fariñas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In the first place, the gentleman is saying that it was the Majority Leader who recognized the Minority Leader. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. That was done last July 30, 2018.
Where does that power of the Majority Leader comes from, Mr. Speaker?
The plenary power comes from the body, Mr. Speaker, your honor. When that recognition was laid down by the Speaker, that was carried by the body. Nobody objected, your honor.
Because, Mr. Speaker, there was no positive motion or statement on that matter. In fact, is the gentleman aware of the jurisdiction of the Committee on Rules, Mr. Speaker?
I am not saying I know all the provisions of the rules, Mr. Speaker, but I will try to answer him.
Because one of the first jurisdictions of the Committee on Rules is all matters relating to the rules of the House. So it has to be the Committee on Rules that should determine such matter in case it needs an interpretation and not the Majority Leader. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
I am not sure about that, Mr. Speaker, your honor, but I have always thought that because it was a pronouncement coming from the Majority Leader and that because he is the Chairman of the Committee on Rules, that the presumption of regularity is always there, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Now, since we are talking about the Committee on Rules, has the Committee on Rules convinced already, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, that was my understanding because there was a, I think it was the Honorable Castro who was appointed as the acting Majority Leader at the time, and they were, they were able to process that issue.
Mr. Speaker, under our rules, each committee must have a proportional representation between the majority and the minority. So how could the Committee on Rules convince and conduct its business without first deciding as to who is the duly constituted minority?
As far as I know, Mr. Speaker, there was a meeting last week, and this was Tuesday last week, Mr. Speaker.
And who was part of the minority in that meeting of the Committee on Rules, Mr. Speaker?
I'm not sure about the members of the minority who were there, Mr. Speaker, but I think the records will bear that fact.
Which representation would want to know because that's jurisdictional for the Committee on Rules to meet, and any committee for that matter, there must be representation from the minority because it is our practice here. We cannot hold even plenary session without the presence of the minority. More so in the committees. Precisely, I've been told that the committees were told to continue functioning, but there is a pending issue regarding the minority, Mr. Speaker. And so, I would want to know who was the minority recognized during the meeting of the Committee on Rules last Tuesday?
The members of the minority that were present in that committee meeting, I remember the Honorable Atienza was there, Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Garbin was there, and several others. I'm sorry, I cannot remember their names.
I was informed, Mr. Speaker, that it was not an all-member meeting. In fact, it was only a per invitation meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
That is not correct, Mr. Speaker, but because that is a regular meeting held last Tuesday, last week.
Well, Mr. Speaker, regular meeting, but before we settled the matter of the issue and the minority. In fact, at the start of this Congress, we could not meet in the Committee on Rules until we finally decided as to who should be the minority. And it was only then that the Committee on Rules was duly constituted, with the minority naming the members of the different committees. Until such time that they nominated and made the manifestation on the floor, no committee was able to perform. At our present status, Mr. Speaker, there was a change of the Speaker in the middle of the session before, in fact, at the first day of the third regular session, but as we all know now, pursuant to Resolution 2025, the Minority Leader participated in the election of the new Speaker. And the gentleman was talking earlier about Section 8. Section 8 is very clear, Mr. Speaker, and I'll read it, and even a non-lawyer will understand it. I wrote these rules, and it says, "Section 8," it defines who constitutes the majority and the minority. It says, "Members who vote for the winning candidate for Speaker shall constitute the majority in the House, and they shall elect from among themselves the Majority Leader." Ang liwanag po niyan. It tagalog ko po. Yung mga miyembro na boboto sa nanalong Speaker, sila ang bubuo ng mayuriya dito sa camera, at sila ngayon ang pipili mula sa kanila kung sino ang magiging pangulo nila sa mayuriya. So the gentleman says, it does not talk of who will become the minority. It is a basic rule in statutory construction, Mr. Speaker, that what is not included is excluded, or who is not included is excluded, since it defines who the members of the majority are. And the definition and the sole criterion is anybody who votes for the winning candidate for Speaker shall belong to the majority. So anybody who did not vote for the winning candidate, whether he voted for another candidate, whether he abstained, whether he did not want to vote, will be minority because they are not included in the definition of majority. And so, Mr. And so, Mr. Speaker, the learned deputy senior majority leader is arguing on behalf of the minority leader, which is very strange because it should be the minority leader, the person claiming to be the minority leader who should advance and support this case because as clearly stated by the gentleman from Northern Samar, we have existing jurisprudence on the matter, Mr. Speaker. And in the case of Bagilat et al versus Alvarez et al, the Supreme Court categorically stated that the group of Suarez was the duly constituted minority in the House of Representatives. Precisely, petitioners Bagilat and his group of seven opted to become independent by not aligning themselves with the majority or the minority. That is our stature, status here, Mr. Speaker. But then, last Monday, they are arguing, Mr. Speaker, that the minority can participate in the election of a speaker. That would be an anomaly, Mr. Speaker, because the definition of minority is those who do not vote for the winning candidate. So since they were validly constituted precisely because they did not vote for Alvarez, there was and there is an existing minority. And whatever changes happen in the leadership of the speakership, that is a concern of the majority. It does not involve the minority. But when the Honorable, the former minority leader, decided to join a new group and elect a new speaker, that is the new majority in the House. As the learned gentleman from Northern Samar stated, Mr. Speaker, Section 11 talks of declaration of vacancy in the seat of the speaker. Naturally, if you want to declare the position of speaker vacant, there should be a rule called voting to be able to determine if there is a new majority. If there is a new majority because barring any new majority, there will be no change of leadership. But indeed, there was a new majority who were the minority leader and thirteen members of the minority joined to form this new majority. So that is what is happening here, Mr. Speaker. But to cut things short, we wish to inform the Honorable Speaker that pursuant to the rules, pursuant to the decision of the Supreme Court, we who did not vote for the new speaker, the Honorable Speaker Gloria Macabacal Arroyo, being part of the minority already because we did not vote. In fact, we were ousted by the new majority from our positions. The new speaker, the authority leader to be asking the body to vote as to who will be the minority leader. Otherwise, we are already stating that the choice of a minority leader is up to the majority, which is a clear violation of the rule, Mr. Speaker. Will the gentleman agree with that, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, I cannot agree with that embracing statement. Number one, because we made a statement here trying to confirm the action taken by the majority leader. It is not an act of supporting the minority leader, your honor. We qualify that. We needed to confirm the recognition made by the majority leader on July 30, 2018. And in relation to that, we had to explain why the majority leader took that position. If it sounded like we're supporting the minority leader, we're quite sorry for that inconvenience. But the truth of the matter is that whichever position we take, in the end and in the final analysis, this body must be able to resolve this issue. There are contending parties to the minority leadership, Mr. Speaker. It should not continue that way. While it is the sole business of the minority to trace it out among themselves, I think it is the position of the majority leader, your honor, that the work of the House of Representatives should not be compromised because, as I have said, the seeming squabble by the protagonist is directly affecting the integrity, the reputation.
We will pursue that so that I'll know whether to sit down and just watch it because we would welcome a definitive action on the matter, Mr. Speaker. Because, like I said, I was the majority leader in the first and second regular sessions and the success of the 70th Congress is my success. Its failure will be likewise my failure. So I want that we do things properly because last week we approved on third reading more than twenty measures and there was still a cloud of doubt as to the minority. So indeed, I would recommend that the leadership takes a definitive action so that we can, we will respect whatever decision the leadership will make and I hope that they will also respect our prerogative to also bring this matter to the proper forum as we respected also the group of Congressman Bagilat, Manong Edsel, Tom Bilyerin, Tawi Biliones, Gare Alejano, who went to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court gave due course to the case and made a ruling, not necessarily perhaps for the remaining months of our term or tenure, Mr. Speaker, but as a guide to future Congresses. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Eugene De Vera confided to me that he is also wanting to interpolate if he can be recognized, Mr. Speaker.
Maybe I be recognized. Congressman De Vera, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Will the Majority Leader, Congressman Marcoletta, yield to some questions, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, is Congressman Marcoletta aware that under Article 6, Section 16, Paragraph 3 of the Constitution, it allows both Houses of Congress to promulgate its own rules as to how to conduct its proceedings?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Now, in our rules, Mr. Speaker, are you aware that in the preamble, and may I be allowed to read, your honor, it is stated there on how we would conduct our rules, Mr. Speaker? And may I allow to read the preamble of our rules, Mr. Speaker? Our preamble. "We, the members of the House of Representatives of the Republic of the Philippines, in order to fulfill our constitutional duty to make laws that effectively respond to the needs of our people and fulfill their aspirations for a just and humane society where every Filipino can enjoy the blessings of freedom and democracy under a government strengthened by the rule of law, social justice and people empowerment, hereby promulgate and pledge faithful obedience to these rules." Mr. Speaker, Mr. Majority Leader, are you aware of this statement in our preamble that we promulgate and pledge faithful obedience to these rules?
I was following you, Mr. Speaker, in reading this preamble. You read it correctly, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. A while ago, you have been mentioning my name, that we have talked as far as the minority issue in this House of Representatives, Mr. Speaker. Would you agree, Mr. Speaker, that during our talk, I have already told you that I am the minority leader of this House of Representatives?
I remember you telling me, Mr. Speaker, your honor, that you are the minority leader.
In fact, Mr. Speaker, I even told you that I have accepted some members coming from the majority who applied to me to be members of the minority. Do you recall that, Mr. Speaker? Were I included during that meeting?
I cannot recall that you were there, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Did you send invitation to me to attend that Rules Committee meeting?
I cannot remember that also, Mr. Speaker.
Are you aware, Mr. Speaker, that I'm also designated then as the deputy minority leader and as such, I am an ex officio member of that Committee on Rules?
Mr. Speaker, the reason why there seems to be some lapses in mechanisms and in procedures, you will have to understand that a vacancy was declared and there were semblance of trying to organize because it's not normal when you oust an incumbent speaker and then a new speaker emerges. I think that can be completely understood that the normal process might have taken this way or that way, but that doesn't mean that there is no regularity in the process. All we can say is it was unfortunate that sometimes, even in the best of families, you know, problems can occur, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, Mr. Speaker, being aware that I am an ex officio chairman of the Committee on Rules, do you admit that you commit some lapses when you did not invite me to that meeting?
No, it's not really committing some lapses, your honor. Some... Because it was dictated by the circumstances and there is a need to confirm and reconfirm some positions because at that time, of course, even the senior majority leader was replaced. The former majority leader was also ousted and he was replaced by a new one. I think this is understandable, Mr. Speaker, but not to connote a meaning that some lapses have been committed.
So, Mr. Speaker, why am I not invited during that meeting last Tuesday? Being an ex officio chairman, ah, being the ex officio member of the Committee on Rules?
There might have been problems in notice, Mr. Speaker, but I could not confirm why you were not invited.
But some other ex officio members from were invited there, isn't it, Mr. Speaker?
Because, Mr. Speaker, at that time, maybe I can only, I can only make my own opinion now because you were claiming to be the minority leader and the minority leader on record is still Mr. Suarez and another group is claiming for a minority leader, then this probably would explain why somebody was not invited or even notified. You have to understand the situation, Mr. Speaker, under which the present dispensation is operating.
So, Mr. Speaker, you are not really aware of the real reason why I'm not invited, isn't it?
It's not about reason, Mr. Speaker. It's about the system that is undergoing some adjustments, which is completely understood, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. So, Mr. Speaker, since there's an issue here on the minority leader, would you agree with me as far as Rule 2 is concerned, that what will apply here is Section 8, Section 11 and Section 13 of our rules?
Mr. Speaker, at some point, a certain rule will apply. At some other points, it could not be applied. Section 8 cannot be applied in all situations when you elect a speaker. That was the position taken by the majority leader in consultation with the present leadership.
Let's focus on Section 8. And I ask you, Mr. Speaker, how does a member of the House of Representatives apply to be a member in the majority?
He should write formally.
No, your honor, please. What are the conditions wherein a member of the House of Representatives be included as a member of the majority? What are the conditions?
During organizational states, like when we start or commence a session, the rule says members who will vote for the winning speaker will constitute the majority. That is very clear.
And, Mr. Speaker, what is another scenario or case wherein a member may be included in the majority?
When somebody in the minority chooses to join the majority by writing formally that he be accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Do you recall any incident when this rule that you have just stated happened, that a member from the majority or minority transferred to either majority or minority by writing a letter to either the majority or the minority, Mr. Speaker?
It happens all the time, Mr. Speaker. It happened to me too.
During the voting for speaker, your honor, if you could still remember, way back 2016, are you aware of an instance wherein a member coming from the majority wrote to the minority, wrote to the minority to be included in the minority and won as minority leader during that time, Mr. Speaker?
I could not confirm that, your honor, but to my knowledge, there is a group of minority who wrote to the minority leader and they were accepted as members of the minority.
During the time, during the voting for the speaker then, Mr. Speaker?
No, in subsequent days, Mr. Speaker, because that was the complicated situation that I was trying to explain. Because if you will read Section 8, Mr. Speaker, your honor, while there is a very clear ruling for the members of the majority who have voted for the winning speaker, the rest of the provision of Section 8 is silent on whether a member who abstained from voting or he did not vote at all is automatic member of the minority. That one was not contemplated in the rule. By implication, however, those who voted for another candidate as supported by the presidents in the last Congresses, they are the members of the minority. But as to those who abstained and those who did not care to vote, that was not covered clearly under the rules, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, are you aware of the facts in the Bagilat versus Alvarez-Farinhas-Suarez case on what transpired during that time that the Suarez group was recognized as the minority group in the House of Representatives?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, although I can tell you that I am not one of the petitioners in that case.
Are you aware of the fact that Congressman Suarez then voted for Speaker Alvarez during the voting for the speaker, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, I was aware of that.
Are you aware that during that time, the Honorable Congressman Suarez applied to the minority in order that he could be part of the minority, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Are you aware of that time that during the voting for the minority leader during that time, that Congressman Suarez won as the minority leader, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, because there was a subsequent voting that happened. I was informed that those who abstained from voting, it's quite a sizable group, joined the minority and they chose to side and vote for the honorable Suarez. That's why he became the minority leader and removing any other contest for the other claimant by the time the honorable Bagilat.
Are you aware, Mr. Speaker, that the very reason that the Supreme Court in Bagilat versus Suarez case denied the petition of Congressman Bagilat is the fact that Congressman Suarez followed the provisions of Section 8, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, but with the qualification that I have previously explained. The application of Section 8 is strictly within the inaugural session. It cannot be applied outside the inaugural session of Congress because those particular provisions relate themselves to the need of the House to organize.
Mr. Speaker...
Wala pang minority, wala pang majority. Kaya kailangan nating magkaroon ng rules na ganon. But 'yung nangyari sa atin two weeks ago, as I was explaining, was not to organize. We were fully organized when a vacancy was declared. That is the peculiarity of that scenario. It cannot be compared to the one that we did two years ago. We cannot use Section 8, which is purposely written there in order for the House to organize. When the House is fully organized and there is a vacancy, you cannot apply that. And that is very obvious and quite simple, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Mr. Speaker, I cannot find those arguments of view in the rules. Well, anyway, Mr. Speaker, we could see in Section 11 and Section 13, it speaks here of vacancy in the office of, particularly the office of the speaker, your honor. It laid down the procedure on how the office of the speaker could be declared vacant. And it also laid down the procedure, your honor, on how will the voting be conducted as far as the selection of the new speaker, your honor. Clearly, it refers to a nominal voting when we declare the office of the speaker to be vacant, but the voting should require majority of all members of the House of Representatives. Meaning, your honor, it only prescribes the number of votes needed whenever the post of the speaker should be declared vacant.
But, Mr. Speaker...
May I continue, Mr. Speaker? And also, your honor, it also prescribes the manner on how the speaker should be elected. And the rule says, Mr. Speaker, that majority votes of all members of the House of Representatives. What does it mean, your honor? We are only trying to determine the number of votes needed to install a new speaker. Your honor, you could look that we are now 292 members. Just correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Speaker. But 292, what is the majority vote of 292? That is 147. 147 members, your honor, would be the minimum votes required to oust a sitting speaker. At the same time, another, the minimum vote of 147 votes are also needed to elect a new speaker, your honor. This is the procedure laid down in Section 11 and Section 13, your honor, of these rules.
May I know the question, Mr. Speaker, your honor?
Now, my question, your honor, is this. When we read the rules, Mr. Speaker, we just don't read it on a section, on only one section, your honor. We have to read, your honor, the entirety of the rules. Do you agree with me, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, your honor, and by reading all the rules, you know which one is applicable at the right time.
Yes, your honor. Section 11 or Section 13 never spoke of the automatic inclusion of anyone who voted for the speaker to be part of the majority, isn't it, Mr. Speaker?
Well, depend on the situation, Mr. Speaker. As already laid down in Section 11 of Rule 3, vacancy and filling up a vacancy is both apart. It's very, very different from electing a speaker at the time that we need to organize. This is something, this is where we should understand each other well.
But, Mr. Speaker, Section 11 and Section 13 did not speak of membership at all. It only spoke of how we will declare the seat of the speaker vacant and how would the new speaker be voted upon. And with the speak of the effect of how the speaker, those who voted for the speaker be considered as far as membership is concerned, we refer, Mr. Speaker, to Section 8, Rule 2 of our rules. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
The premise is wrong, Mr. Speaker. Because, as I, may I repeat myself, we cannot compare two scenarios and apply one remedy. A remedy applies only to a specific time. Let me make a very simple example. One time you get sick, Mr. Speaker, your honor, doctor will diagnose you and prescribe you a medicine. Next time you get sick again, it may not be entirely the same sickness and he prescribes another medicine. Mr. Speaker, when the rules contemplated on the vacancy, it really happens and it happened two weeks ago. As I have said, it happened at the time when we are organized. You know the majority members? You also know the minority members. The only problem that we have to process is how to fill up the vacancy. You will know the differing characteristic between two years ago and two weeks ago. Two years ago, there were three contending aspirants for the speakership and for which the members should choose from among the three protagonists. In filling up the vacancy, there was only one nominated candidate. That's why, when I hypothesized earlier, if Speaker GMA was unable to get the required majority, that motion to vacate would have been defeated and the incumbent speaker would have stayed in power. That is the peculiarity of the situation. That was not the case two years ago when we were talking only about organization. So if you continuously apply 8, Section 8, puro ocho. Ocho ocho, Mr. Speaker, your honor. Baka mangyari rito eh, is paghating pa ba. I'm sorry to be able to use such levity, but levity aside, Mr. Speaker, I'm only trying to dramatize the distinction between the two periods. How is vacancy created? This is Section 13 of our rules. When a vacancy was declared and it is the duty of this House to elect a new speaker, it happened that there is only one candidate. In an inaugural session, you can clearly define those, the members of the majority and the minority. In the case of the honorable Suarez, I was informed that when a manifesto of support was laid out, he was the one who first signed the manifesto. I don't think at that point in time, Mr. Suarez knew that there had numbers. What I'm trying to say, at that time, he did not even know that Speaker Gloria Macapagel Arroyo will be able to get the majority because he was the first who signed the manifesto. And so, it was only, and it is only the majority leader who can explain the motivation of his act. Not you, not me, not everybody else. If he wanted to side with the majority, he could write to the majority. As I explained earlier, there is no need to change color because what was needed is only to find a replacement and to vote for a new speaker. I already explained the absurdity of several situations, Mr. Speaker. So, if we continue to invoke Section 8 even under a circumstance of changing guards, I don't think that will be supported legally, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Madam Speaker, so, look at Section 11 and Section 13. It is clear there that it has no statements or even provisions as far as membership is concerned. Would you agree with me, Mr. Speaker?
May I get that one again, Mr. Speaker?
Look at Sections 11 and 13, Madam Speaker. It never mentioned or any provision therein, did not in any way classify membership of our members here, either majority or minority, as to the effect of the vacancy, right?
Precisely, Mr. Speaker. Because there is no need to explain there. When voting for replacement of a new speaker, it does not distinguish between a minority or a majority. Everybody can participate. There is no distinction there. If the objective of our rules is to make Section 8 appear to be applicable in all situations, why they did not replicate Section 8 so that it can apply even to a situation where you will have to elect a new speaker?
You know, Madam Speaker, why membership has never been touched in Section 11 or 13? The answer is because it is already written in Section 8 of the rules. So, you have to read Section 11 and Section 13 as far as membership is concerned with Section 8. And Section 8 really prescribes on how would you determine whether a member belongs to the majority or other a member belongs to the minority or whether the member belongs to the independent. Do you agree or disagree?
I would disagree, Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, sorry. The correct interpretation is the reason why there was no distinction between majority and minority in Section 11 of Rule 3 because precisely it is not necessary to segregate. What is needed is only to vote. Whether you are in the majority or minority, you have to vote. And the application of logic dictates that Section 8 can only be applied in a situation where it is really required. That is where we commence the first session of every Congress, Mr. Speaker. I know...
Madam Speaker, may I may I still continue, Madam Speaker, with the indulgence of the Majority Leader? I'm not yet finished, Madam Speaker, because I'm trying to convince my colleagues here that I'm indeed the minority leader. So allow me to speak for a while, Madam Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to...
Just few questions, Majority Leader, Madam Speaker. Just to distinguish Rule 2 from Rule 3, Madam Speaker.
Under that condition, Mr. Speaker, your honor?
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Madam Speaker. As far as membership is concerned, Mr. Speaker, look at Rule 2. Rule 2 applies when we speak of membership. But as far as the officers are concerned, we have the Speaker, Deputy Speakers, Secretary General, Sergeant at Arms. Rule 3 apply. Rule 3 applies. You have to distinguish Rule 2 from Rule 3, Mr. Speaker, because Rule 2 governs membership in this chamber while Rule 3 governs as far as the officers is concerned, your honor. So please, wag tayong malilito on what Rule 2 apply as far as membership is concerned, Rule 2. As far as the officers are concerned, if there are vacancy, if we have to change the speaker, then we have to apply Rule 3. That is, your honor, the application of the rules. That's why I read the preamble a while ago, your honor, and in our last sentence, hereby promulgate and pledge faithful obedience to these rules, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I don't think anybody is confused between the utility of Section 3 and Rule 3 and Rule 2. Unfortunately, it is the gentleman who appears to be confused because we're not processing the problem about the Sergeant-at-Arms. We're not talking about the issue of the Secretary General. The only issue here is the vacancy. And there is replacement by a new speaker. This is where we're supposed to concentrate because it is very simple, your honor. It is not complicated. When you have a vacancy, you need to vote for a new speaker. And if you vote for a speaker, you don't have to distinguish between the majority and minority. It is the business of the entire House. It is a right granted to every member of the House, be it in the majority or minority. That's why this particular rule does not speak about membership in the majority or minority. What is only at stake is the vacancy to be filled up. I am not sure why the gentleman is insisting that we go back to Section 8. Section 8 is very clear. It's for organization than anything else. Section 3 particularizes a situation that a vacancy occurred. It was not so in Rule 2. So how do you fill up a vacancy? The members will vote. That is the only point here. And if you vote, the issue is do you require to change membership, either in minority or majority? It is not in the rule. Otherwise, if that is the case and that is the argument of the gentleman, Mr. Speaker, it should have been written there. Unfortunately, it is not there. Why? Because logic should be applied that Section 8 is only for organization.
Precisely, Mr. Speaker. That is why Rule 2 is entitled "Membership." And I do not have to read to you the whole Rule 2 as far as membership is concerned. Rule 3 refers to officers and even vacancy, but it does not in any way settle the issue on membership. So when the issue of membership is in question, we go back to Rule 2, Mr. Speaker. It is very clear. Well, anyway, Mr. Speaker, I have made my point complete already. I think I have already articulated my position. And I may not agree with the Majority Leader on how he applies the rules, but to my mind, we have really to differentiate Rule 2 on membership on Rule 3 as far as the treatment of officers, particularly on vacancy, your honor, that would affect the membership of its member, your honor. Well, Mr. Speaker, to wind up, I just want to manifest again before this august body that per rules, I am the minority leader and I want to assert it and my group is part of the minority. Magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat.
May I just put on record, Mr. Speaker, that the opinion of the honorable Devera is as good... the opinion of the Honorable De Vera is as good as the opinion of everybody else, including this representation. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Congressman Kimbo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the Honorable Senior Deputy Majority Leader yield to just a few questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Balik na po tayo, no? Section 8, Section 11, Section 13. Nakakalimutan natin 'yung pinaka-basic na usapin sa Section 8. Nakalagay po dito on membership. Members who vote for the winning candidate for Speaker shall constitute the majority. Nakasalagay din po dyan kung how they will elect among themselves and so forth. Pwede ba, Senior Deputy Majority Leader, paliwanagan mo nga kami? Bakit ba merong majority? Bakit ba merong minority? Ano bang esensya ng distinction na 'yan? Bakit ba ginagawa 'yan at point of commencement when we convene for the first time in the 4th Monday of July immediately succeeding the elections? Bakit po?
Mr. Speaker, the majority is needed as well as the minority because this is the parliamentary requirements of a legislative assembly like ours.
What is the rationale for that requirement? Much like we have a Secretary General, we have a Sergeant-at-Arms, they're also required by the rules, they're required by the Parliament, but obviously there's a ratio. What is irrational why we need a majority and a minority?
As to the administrative staff, your honor, I could only say that we need to be efficient in discharging the duties of the whole House and we are supported by these officials and their staff. In relation to the question as to why the majority and minority has to be defined, this is the very nature of legislation, Mr. Speaker. Legislation can only mature into a good measures or pieces of legislation if they are deliberated completely. And in deliberating every measure that should be passed by this body, we need the voice of the minority because sometimes the voice of the majority may be deafening and the minority should at least be able to insist on a certain part that may have been, although not obviously overlooked. But in most cases, the minority is needed, your honor, because we need to see every side of the coin, Mr. Speaker.
Do- I totally agree and do I take it to mean, Mr. Majority Leader, Mr. Speaker, do I take it to mean that therefore the- as a democracy, as a Congress, importante nagkakaroon ng debate tulad ng sinabi po ninyo para may ibang mata na maaring hindi nakita ng mas nakararami ay merong pangalawang mata na tumitingin para kilatisin ito. Checks and balance para di po nating nadidinig, Mr. Speaker. Tama po? I couldn't agree more, Mr. Speaker. Okay. Tingnan natin ang Section 8 and I will assume for the meantime, assuming without admitting and obviously in arguing with deepest exabundante kauntela, we accept your philosophy that under Section 8, paano din idetermine po ang majority? Ang majority ay ano po?
Nakalagay po sa ating alituntunin na lahat po ng bumoto sa panig ng nagwaging Speaker ay sila po ay nagkoconstitute ng majority.
Papaano namang po 'yung minority?
'Yung sa minority po, kung babasahin natin ang alituntunin, by implication, 'yung bumoto po sa natalong kandidato for Speaker ay naililinya dun sa panig ng minority.
So, by implication at by practice tulad po ng sinabi ninyo, ang nagiging kabahagi sa minority ay ang mga taong hindi bumoto sa Speaker. Tama po?
Ganun nga po ang implication noon, Mr. Speaker.
Ano pong dahilan dun?
Marami po siguro may lalahad na dahilan, pero para hindi na po siguro magtalo-talo, kinakailangan maklasipain na po 'yung majority at saka 'yung minority. Kaya po nilagay sa tuntunin kung sino po 'yung bumoto sa nagwaging Speaker, majority kayo. By implication, 'yun namang po 'yung bumoto dun sa ibang kandidato na hindi naman nagwogi edong kayo sa minority. Ibig lamang sabihin, 'yung panig po siguro ng Speaker, maaring hindi sila magkasundo dun sa panukala o dun sa mga plano nung nagwaging Speaker. Mas mabuti na kanya kung dito tayo sa kabila para sa ganun mabantayan natin 'yung majority at dito tayo siguro magiging mas mabisa.
So, nagkaka-perform ng kanilang basic function of checks and balance dahil nung nagkalabanan, hindi mo kakampi ang nanalo logically and based on the rational and function ng check and balance ay ibinibigay ito sa mga tao na hindi bumoto sa nanalong Speaker. So, ito ang dahilan at inaargy po ninyo na kung bakit pag inoorganize natin on the 4th Monday of July of every succeeding election as contained in Section 1, bakit po pagdating kay si Congressman Suarez, bumoto ho ba siya para kay Speaker Arroyo?
Alam niyo namang po yun, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Hindi, pero for the record lang po, dahil kayo po ang learned at pinag- hindi po siya bumoto o bumoto?
Hindi po, makikita lang po natin sa record, bumoto siya eh.
So bumoto po siya para sa nanalong Speaker. Kung titignan po natin, base sa inyong dahilan, base sa pagpapaliwanag, kung papaano nakicreate ang minority para ma-perform mo ang iyong checks and balance, ang linaw sa Section 8 nakasulat ay dapat hindi ka bumoto, taga-supporta, at higit sa lahat, hindi ka nagcast ang vote mo in favor of the winning Speaker. Sinabing ahon natin kanina, for you to be able to perform the checks and balance functions, which is essential to democracy. Tulad ng sinabi ninyo, kailangan may kumilatis na iba. Kaya't sinasabi sa Section 8 ay hindi ka pwede kung ikaw ay bumoto sa nanalo, hindi ka pwedeng maging bahagi ng minority worse maging minority leader. Ang tinatanong ko po ngayon, base po sa inyong teorya na kakaiba. Sabi po ninyo, ang rule na 'yan ay nag-aapply lang at point of organization or for the first time we convene. Papaano po na ang dahilan? The very reasons why a minority is created is number one, you must not have voted for the winning Speaker and number two, that allows you to perform your check and balance functions. Papaano pong nasususpende po yun o hindi na nagpreprevail kung nagkaroon ng pagbabago ng pamumuno sa kalagitnaan? Paliwanagan niyo nga po kami. Kung tatanggapin po namin ang inyong paliwanag, the minority serves as a check and balance, therefore, they cannot be a voter in favor of the winning candidate. 'Yan ang esensya. Pero sa sinasabi niyo po sa amin ngayon, 'yang function na 'yan, 'yang rule na 'yan ay nagpreprevail lang at point of organization. Pero kung six weeks later, may nagkapalit ng Speaker, one year later, two years later, ay hindi na. Ang minority ay hindi na kailangang hindi bumoto sa Speaker dahil hindi na niya function ang check and balance. Ganun ang implication ng inyong sinasabi. Because I cannot imagine why the most basic rule in Section 8 that says, if you voted for the winning Speaker, you cannot be part of the minority. Why? Because you cannot perform the checks and balance function, which is essential in a democracy. Papaanong sasabihin ninyo? Ah, sa simula lang 'yung kailangan ng check and balance? Sa kalagitnaan, hindi na. That's why a minority leader can actually vote for the winning Speaker. Paano ipapaliwanag po yun?
Dalawa po 'yung balangkas ng tanong niya, Mr. Speaker. Kailangang unahin po 'yung isa, 'yung nakabatay dun sa Section 8 sapagkat ang sabi niya, kailangan po pala na lahat ng bumoto sa Majority Leader, ay sa Speaker, sa lahat ng pagkakataon ay palaging nandun sa panig ng majority. Pero kung kinakailangan pong linawin ulit, Mr. Speaker, sa Rule 1 po kasi, ito po 'yung convening and organizing the House. Kaya ko po sinasabi kanina na 'yung ginawa nating pag-elect sa Speaker two years ago is about organization. Inaugural session po yun eh. Makikita po 'yung batayan dito, Mr. Speaker, sa Rule 1. Ang title po ng Rule 1, convening and organizing the House. Mapapansin po natin sa third paragraph, pag binasa po natin dun, simulan natin sa pangalawang pangungusap, the Speaker shall be elected by a majority vote of all members through a roll call vote. Dito po binabanggit na sa inaugural session talagang merong pagbubutuhan. Dun ngayon, nadidistinguish po kung sino 'yung majority at saka 'yung minority. Ang totoo po eh, kaya nagkaroon po ng complication sapagkat kung babalikan po ninyo 'yung Rule 8 na pinagbabasihan ng ating ginagalang na mamabatas, 'yung pong pag nag-abstain ka o hindi ka bumoto, wala namang kategorikal na deklarasyon dito na member ka na ng minority. Kahit na po bali-baligtarin po natin ang Section 8, wala pong binabanggit doon pag nag-abstain ka from voting o hindi ka bumoto, member ka na ng minority. Pangalawa po, ang binabanggit kasi natin sa organizational session natin, palagi pong merong magkakalaban sa Speaker. Ang nangyari po sa nangyari, ang nangyari po nung nakaraang dalawang linggo, ito po ay filling up of a vacancy na nagkataon namang po, naiisa lang ang komandidato. Sinasabi po namin na hindi nasasakripisyo dito 'yung pagiging minority mo at saka 'yung majority mo sapagkat walang binabanggit doon ang Rule 3, Section 11. Kung sakasakali po na sa tuwing boboto tayo, ano mang pagkakataon? Kaya may bakante, kaya wala, kaya inaugural session, eh dapat ilagay natin sa anumang pagkakataon kapag bumoto ka sa Speaker, vacancy man o hindi, palagi kang nagkakaroon, paragi nagkakaroon ng bagong formasyon ang majority at saka ang minority. Hindi po ganon sapagkat sa Section 11, ang importante lamang po, makaboto ang bawat membro. Sapagkat ang nakalagay doon, all members. Sa Section 11 po, hindi po dinistinggi kung minority ka o majority ka kasi kailangang bumoto ka. Ngayon, sa pangalawa namang pong tanong, eh kung bumoto si Ginoong Suarez sa ating bagong Speaker Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, papano natin masisiguro na magiging effective siya na piskalizer in the principle of our republicanism on checks and balances? Mr. Speaker, hindi po ako pwedeng mag-speculate. Hindi ko pwedeng hatulan si Ginoong Suarez na kung mo siya bumoto sa bagong Speaker ay ineffective na siya at mawawalan na siya ng tatag ng kalooban para gampanin niya 'yung kanyang tungkulin biro ng minority leader. Speculation na yun po sa parte ng representasyong ito, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, lilinawin ko na lang. Hindi natin pinag-uusapan lahat, pero sa Rule 2, Section 8 lang po, napakalinaw at sinabi na rin po ng ating distinguished Majority Leader. Ang dahilan kung bakit ang majority ay 'yung mga sumuporta ay at ang minority ay mga hindi sumuporta ay dahil kailangan ng checks and balance. Hindi pinapaliwanag kung bakit 'yung ganung klaseng sistema ay hindi natin pwedeng ipagpatuloy pa sa ibat-ibang shake-up o pagpapalit ng Speaker. Hindi talaga may papaliwanag kasi walang paliwanag. Because Rule 2, Section 8 covers all forms of reconstitution or changing of the Speaker. Bakit? Because malinaw at inamin na po ng Majority Leader that kapag ikaw ay bumoto sa nanalong Speaker, hindi ka pwedeng magminority. Kumbaga sa basketball, sinabi mo, ang referee dapat nakaitim nasa gitna ka. Pero sinasabi niyo, hindi. Sa first quarter lang 'yan kapag nagsimula. Sabi ko, bakit? Eh, ang referee ano bang gamit? Ay, ang referee nandyan para i-check at i-balance, siguraduhin na tapatan nagiging laro. Otherwise, wala nang manunood sa atin. Wala nang magtitiwala sa liga natin kung walang maayos sa referee. Kaya susimula pala ang hinahati natin Team A, Team B, dahil dalawa referee. Ngayon, pag nagkakaroon ng pagbabago second quarter, bigla sasabihin, ay hindi, 'yung referee pwede na rin niya mag-uniporme kumampi dun sa iba. Teka muna, eh di po check and balance nga 'yung minority? Kaya nga hindi siya pwedeng maging bahagi ng majority. Ang basic eh, sinabi dun na hindi ka pwedeng pag bumoto ka sa Speaker, hindi ka pwedeng maging minority. But natin papalitan 'yung rule, ibig po sabihin, on checks and balance, sa simula lang pala? Hindi talaga may papaliwanag because it is so clear. What supports it? Look at all the rules. At least in three sections. Dito lang. There is no other section. When you talk about third reading, when you talk about nominal voting, nakasulat dito, ordinary nominal voting on third reading. Section 115, upon motion of a member duly approved, members there being a quorum, nominal voting, et cetera. Nakalagay po dito tinatawag roll call on third reading, ang bawat isa. Ha? Hindi po nakasaad, hindi katulad sa pag-elect ng Speaker. Nakalagay po doon, the Secretary General shall record the votes cast of each member. Pag tiningampunin niyo in the event of a vacancy ulit, nakasulat na naman, kakaiba. Hindi sinasabing will record the number of votes, but no. Nakasulat doon is that the Secretary General is required to vote and record the exact vote of each member. Why? It is different from third reading voting. Why? Because dinidetermine at that point when you vote for a Speaker, sang ka ba? Ikaw ba'y sa majority o sa minority? Why? Because it is important to know who is now going to do the checks and balance. And it simply cannot be acceptable that a minority leader is not only somebody who voted but campaigned for the winning Speaker. Hindi talaga 'yan magiging katanggap-tanggap kung kami man po ay nagiging mapilit, mapulit at paulit-ulit. Humihingi ako ng dispensa at paumanhin, lalong-lalo sa ating Speaker. Ngunit hindi kami mapapagod sa pagpapaalala na kung ano ang tama ay siyang dapat nating gawin dahil itong ikabubuti ng buong House of Representatives. Panghuli, Mr. Speaker, tingnan niyo kung gaano ka ridiculous kung i-apply natin ang rule. If you talk about absurdity, everyone, everyone else outside of Congress is telling us already how absurd it is that we have a minority leader who voted for the winning Speaker. Tayo na lang po ang hindi nakakakita nito. Tinampunin niyo. Let's say we have a divided House. Halimbawa, isang daan lang po ang ating mga Congressista. Isang daan, divided by the middle, 51, 51 sa majority, 49 sa minority. Nakaupo si Speaker A representing the 51 of the majority. Biglang in the middle of their term, nag-challenge ang minority. 49 sila, ang lapit lang. Nagligaw lang ng dalawa sa majority. Pinalipat nila, sinabi nila, "Oy Congressman, lipat ka dito sa amin sa minority, itutulak natin si Speaker B. Pag lumipat kayong dalawa, tayong 51, maipapanalo natin ang Speaker na bago." At nangyari nga. Pag lumipat kayong dalawa, tayong 51, maipapanalo natin ang speaker na bago at nangyari nga. Lumipat ang dalawa, napunta sa minority, 'yung dalawa. So 'yung minority now elect with the help of the two members to the majority. Naialal si Speaker B. Nanalo, 51 sila. Tanggapin natin ang definition ng majority leader. Uh, walang nagbabago guys. Walang nagbabago sa, sa estado. Kung sino 'yung minority dati, ganun pa rin. Kung sino nasa majority, ganun pa rin. Paano magbabago based on their theory? Oy, kailangan mag-apply. A-apply ka uli, ah pupunta ka doon, sisik ng approval, bibigyan. Tinan 'yung sitwasyon. You now have a new majority composed of the 49 minority na may dalawang lumipat galing sa majority. But the majority leader and the rest of the majority are now 49, less than the majority. The speaker is now beholden to a permanent ma- a majority. Kung sino ang majority leader niya, apat na putsiyam na lang sila. Pero hindi pwedeng palitan. Bakit? Pwede mo lang palitan ang majority leader by a vote of all members of the majority. Eh di silang 49 magdi-decide?
Mr. Speaker, I prefer to hear questions than statements.
This, I am winding up, Mr. Speaker, if I may. If I may have a minute and a half, ninety seconds. If I may proceed please. Proceed. Mr. Speaker, you will have, if, if the theory is that people remain permanent in their seats at the point of constitution. Pag unang tayo natin, tayo ay kung majority ka, majority ka forever. In that exact situation in a deeply split uh Congress, you will have a speaker who will now have a majority leader who does not represent the majority and who will be obstinate and can block the agenda of the new speaker. No, that cannot be. The 51 now composed of the 49 minority and the plus two coming from the majority is now the new majority. They will now elect their own majority leader. Why? Because they voted and supported that new speaker. Otherwise, we will have the most absurd of situations where people, when they make a choice from day one, are stuck to that choice. How can you be stuck to your choice? You cannot even transfer. Remember, when you want to transfer, you voted for the ma- you chose to be part of the minority. When we came here July 23, 2016, you want to transfer the majority? You cannot. Because it's not as easy as that. They will just stop you, they will block you. So what is the best way? The best way is when you elect a new speaker, when you declare that seat vacant, it's practically a new Congress as far as we are concerned. Mr. Speaker, Majority Leader, I thank you for your time. Like I said, the purpose is not at all to badger. The purpose is not at all to prevent this house from working. We want Congress to succeed. But we want Congress to see what the entire world is already seeing today. Marami salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, just a few statements.
Mr. Speaker.
Just a few statements to address.
Proceed, Congressman Marcoletta.
The arguments advanced by the Honorable Kimbo. Mr. Speaker, the bone of contention is the fact that the Honorable Suarez voted for the new speaker Gloria Macapagal Arroyo. And according to him, to the Honorable Kimbo, that act of voting the newest speaker already affected his ability to fiscalize. That is the main point. I am not quite in agreement with that kind of argument, Mr. Speaker. Because it seems that we are supposed to vote only on a particular issue because we wanted to retain our position, not being able to hear a statement, a position that you would like to cut across before this body. If we accept the argument that a mi- that a minority leader will be affected in deciding to favor the winning speaker in the time of vacancy, why do we have rules that at one time even the members of the majority write to the minority? Like what happened in several instances? So if you, from majority to minority and from minority to majority, if that compromises your position, why do we have these rules in the first place, Mr. Speaker? We can always conclude that if a member chooses to switch side and write to the minority leader and apply for a membership in the minority, he's already a suspect that his position is already compromised. Because he was part of the majority. This is not the intention of the rules, Mr. Speaker. Those rules were provided in order to give freedom to all members to put themselves in situations where they are comfortable. But as I have explained earlier, Your Honor, in defending the position of the majority leader, in voting for the new speaker, the Honorable Suarez did not sacrifice his position. That was, that was the argument of the majority leader, Your Honor. Because it doesn't need to change and switch position in taking part in voting and in realizing and fulfilling a change in leadership. That is the only point, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker. Congressman Atsensai is recognized.
Mr. Majority Leader, with your permission.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
We would like to also be given the opportunity to pose some questions. Unay binabati namin kayo sa inyong, pag bubukas itong pakisang ito, dito sa kongreso. Where the debates should really be done and not on media, not on radio, not on television. Na nakikita po natin for the past two weeks. Sa media po ito tinatalakay, eh wala po namang magagawa ang media. Dito sa isyu nito. The issue before us is one simple question. It's a question of interpretation, accurate interpretation of the rules. As stated by the Majority Floor Leader, agreed upon by those who interpreted him, rules are made to be followed. So the rules are there glaring before our very own eyes. There should be no room to misinterpret it, to distort it and to mangle it in any other form other than what it was intended for. And that is to put order in the deliberations of this chamber and to have an efficient procedure to be followed in our making of laws. Kaya merong majority, at merong minority. Kaya ito'y tinatakda sa simula ng ano mang kongreso. This was done on July 25, 2016. Yung rules na sinasabi at paulit-ulit natin naririnig are rules that apply in the organizational stage of this chamber. But we have been organized, we have been functioning for the past two years efficiently. Because precisely, the majority is properly defined and the minority is properly defined. Ang hindi po maintindihan itong inyong lingkod, eh bakit po natin binabago ang nakatakda na sa ating libro? Why are we misinterpreting what is already written in our rules? The majority is defined. In fact, it is stated that they shall serve until this Congress expires on June 30, 2019. Then we will have a new minority leader, as we will have a new, probably a new speaker and a new majority leader. Pero that is, that will happen in 2019 after the elections of the new members of Congress. So today, we're hearing and we would like to listen. Marami po tayong naririnig, marami rin tayong naririnig na mga Latin dictums. Argumentum. Ang tawag ko po rito, argumentum ad absurdum. Because ipinipilit po 'yung hindi namang katanggap-tanggap. Ang sabi po nung aking kaibigan Congressman De Vera, siya lang daw ang naiwan minority member sapagkat siya rin nag-abstain. By sitting on the fence where they call for duty to make a decision on that day, he sat on the fence like Humpty Dumpty and thereafter he says, I am the new leader. Katanggap-tanggap po ba yon? And just to set the record straight, hindi po namang siya lang hindi nag-abst- bumoto. Hindi rin po bumoto ang dalawa sa ating mga membro. Congresswoman Daphne Lee, Daphne, Daphne Lee and Congresswoman Eusebio of passing. So therefore, they claim that he is the only one who can claim leadership in the minority. It's wrong, erroneous, distorted, self-serving, if at all. Eh ganon din po namang ang ating kaibigan si Congressman Kimbo. Pinipilit ka pong maintindihan 'yung kanyang argumento, baka namang pwede tayong magtulungan na. Pero hindi ko po matanggap sapagkat 'yung kanyang ipinipilit niya na 'yung mga nag-abstain at 'yung mga bumoto sa tawag ng pagkakataon at hamon ng ating tungkulin, I automatically belong into the minority. Hindi ko po pwedeng tanggapin 'yun because I am happy with my role in the minority. I am effectively fiscalizing in every manner, in the committee, in the plenary and anywhere as a minority member. So my faith in this Congress cannot be decided by a misinterpretation of the rules. Mr. Speaker, but in a ating deputy majority leader took up this issue on the floor and therefore, we have to decide on this issue. At hindi po madi-desisyon na ito sa ANC, sa CNN at sa mga ibang television channels. Nakakahiyal lamang kami na tayo hindi makasundu-sundu rito. Ito po'y kailangang talakayin dito sa loob ng kongreso katulad po ng ating ginagawa. At sa takdang panahon, eh bigyan natin ang decision. Nagkaroon ba ng bakante? Is there any vacancy? The question is very simple. Is there any vacancy in the minority leadership? And the answer is, no. In the eyes of some, there is. But show me your basis for saying there is a vacancy. Hindi pwedeng magsigawan tayo dito. Mas malakas ang boses ko sa inyo dahil may mikropono ko. Pakita ninyo ang rule na nagsasabing meron tayong bakante at dun kayo mag-apply kung merong vacancy. But rule number 11, number 13 are very clear. If we want to declare a vacancy, a majority of all members of this chamber should vote for that the same way we remove the speaker. You cannot stand up and claim we are the leaders simply because you are claiming it. We would like to replace Congressman Suarez because we would like to take their position, his position. Kung may vacancy, pag-usapan natin, ang decision natin, pagbutuhan natin. Pero kung wala pong vacancy, why are we arguing that we are assuming that there is a vacancy when there is no vacancy in the minority ranks? Congressman Suarez is effective as a minority leader, use truly. I've been trying my best to be a very effective fiscalizer for the past two congresses. I could opt, could have opted to be a majority member during the time of Speaker Belmonte. Because he's my compadre, he's my good friend, long time relation. At matagal na po kami makasama, makasama po kami sa revolución. Makasama po kami sa ENSA. Makasama po kami sa lahat ng mga yugto ng aming politika. I could have opted to be one of his key majority members. I did not because I chose to be with the minority. And I think no one can impute any allegation that I failed in my road. We prevented the passage of the BBL. Minamarga ang buya. The BBL constituted under the former administration was fraud and unconstitutional. In fact, bordering on being treasonous at triedurang sa bansa. Kami po'y pumunta sa korte, dini-manda na namin for treason. Yung mga gumawa nun panukalang batas na yun. Kalayin 'yung bibigay na halos lahat sa mga gusto natin tulungan muslim. Ang kapangyarihan, bumuo ng kanilang militar, kanilang sariling pulis, kanilang sariling bandila, kanilang sariling national anthem. Sarili, sarili nila ko, constitutional bodies, lahat po'y binigay. And that's the reason that compelled us to go to work. Accusing them of treason, meron bang nakagawa sa inyo? Meron bang nakagawa dito sa mga matatapan natin mga kasamahan ngayon? To defend the sovereignty of our nation. And I am proud to be one of those who went to court to sue them for treason. Pero ngayon, because hindi lumusot 'yan for a, because of effective fiscalizing, nabuo natin ang bagong BOL na meron ng mga reforma at katanggap-tanggap na provision. Wala na silang militar, wala na silang pulis, wala na silang national anthem, wala na silang bandila at wala na silang constitutional bodies which would have been declared unconstitutional at any point if that was passed by the 16 Congress. So therefore, relations of our members, all of us with the speaker should not be the basis of our decisions on whom to recognize as the minority leader. I am close to the speaker now. But I will still fiscalize. Kung siya po'y mali, gagawin po ako ng kanyang tungkulin. Katulad po nung ginawa ko nung nakaraang kongreso, pag mali si Speaker Albert Belmonte, eh katulong po ako nung bang humokontra sa lahat ng hakbanging pinagsisikapan niya. I never gave up my principles simply because of my relations with Speaker Belmonte. So I think it's unfair for us to judge the relationship of Sen- Minority Leader Suarez with the present speaker and say that he will not be an effective minority leader. It's unfair if you impute that on my person and character. Dahil nagkakamali kayo. It's unfair to even impute that to any member of the minority now. As we would like to consider each and every one of us imbued with nothing but patriotism and love of country and wanting our common desire to give our pe- people a better life. Need a minority leader? Hindi itong mga piktatalo na natin ito. Ang pag-usapan na natin ngayon, how do we solve the rising prices of rice? The runaway inflation and all the other economic problems that are now making life difficult for our people. So the sooner we are able to resolve this, the earlier we will be able to work. And we will work together as long as a decision is made on the interpretation of the rules. By the majority taking up the issue on the floor. Again, as I said, we welcome that. Because who else will interpret the rules except the majority of this body? You will not allow us to interpret the rules. As we will not allow any one singular figure like Congressman De Vera to be interpreting the rules by himself. The majority must decide on the interpretation of the rules. And the rules are very clear. There is no vacancy you cannot create one with your imagination and with your ambition. Having said that, I will cite now another foreign but appropriate saying. El fallo del west es inapelable. The decision of the referees are final. And I hope when the majority decides on the fate of this issue, we will all buckle down to work as one body, majority and minority. That was the improve, improvement of life of suffering Filipinos. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Ipagpaumanhin po ninyo na hindi na ako magkukomento.
Ipapahumanhin po niyo na hindi na ako magkocoment sa inyong talumpati. Ginagalang ko po ang inyong opinyon kung gaano rin po. Ganun din po yung paggalang ko sa opinyon ng ating mga kasama, Honorable De Vera and Honorable Kimbo. Sana po'y maayos na niyo, gaya po ng inyong nilulunggati para makapagpatuloy na po tayo sa ating trabaho.
Majority Leader.
I move that we recognize Representative Tom Villarín from Akbayim Party list for his interpolation.
Congressman Villarín is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Thank you, Floor Leader. Would Deputy, Senior Deputy Majority Leader be open to some questions?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Well, Mister Speaker, is the theme of the sponsor when delivering his privilege speech is all about defending who the minority is? Is that the point of your privilege speech, Mister Sponsor?
No, Mister Speaker. This representation was very clear because on July 30, 2018, the Majority Leader recognized the Honorable Suarez. So it was our position that we should explain why the new Majority Leader took that position of recognizing Mister Suarez. It is not, and it will never be, the position of Majority Leader, Your Honor, to meddle into the affairs of the majority, of the minority. The problem is for themselves to settle.
Precisely, Mister Speaker, good sponsor. Because if you said that last week, the Majority Leader recognized the minority without benefit of a process and even at that time, we would still having an interpolation of the privilege speech given by Representative Kimbo, then it is the majority now who decided who should be minority?
Because, Mister Speaker, that will not preempt the minority or those who claims for the position of the minority leader to take any other courses of action in order to ventilate their claims. But for the majority, Your Honor, and specifically this a ghost chamber, the majority and this House need to protect its reputation and its integrity, including the duty to buckle down to work, Mister Speaker, especially at the time when the 2019 National Budget is in full swing as well as other equally important legislations that we need to tackle, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I raised that point because last week, on that date, on July 30, I raised a parliamentary question. So when I asked then the Majority Leader who voted for the Speaker, the new Speaker, and it was put on record that there were 184 who voted for the new Speaker, Speaker Gloria Arroyo. And in the enumeration contained in that House resolution that was also affirmed by the plenary, the 184 included the 14 members led by Representative Danny Suarez. Would that be a correct interpretation of what transpired in that journal?
That is not a matter of interpretation, Mister Speaker.
So that is on record, Mister Speaker.
The fact remains that 184 voted for Speaker Gloria Macapagal Arroyo and their names are listed in that document. And that is a fact, there is no need to interpret, Mister Speaker.
And it includes the names of Representative Suarez and the 13 others who supposedly quote-unquote constituted the minority.
That's borne out by the facts, Mister Speaker.
So it's a factual, uh, it's a factual, it's meaning it's now on the records of the House?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Okay, now, when you say there were 184 who voted for the new Speaker and your contention about who constitutes the minority and the majority, you're saying that it was only the Speaker that was voted upon. There was no reorganization of both the majority and minority. Am I correct that that's your contention in this issue?
I am not sure about the premise of your question, Mister Speaker, Your Honor.
No, because what you're pointing out is that Representative Suarez still retains the minority because there was no vacancy as you've stated.
Mister Speaker, that is in line with the act of the Majority Leader in recognizing the Honorable Danilo Suarez as the minority leader because that is the fact that appears on record.
Yes, Mister Speaker, and I'm quite surprised why Representative Suarez is not standing up, but it's rather the Senior Deputy Majority Leader who is defending who the minority should be.
That is not correct, Mister Speaker.
But anyway, Mister Speaker.
The implication is a speculation, Mister Speaker.
No, it's borne out by the facts.
I made a qualification that we need to explain the position made by the Majority Leader. If it sounded like siding with the minority leader, Danilo Suarez, that's quite unfortunate, but that was not intended, Mister Speaker.
Now, let me again cite facts, Mister Speaker, Mister Sponsor. In the 2016 Constitution of the House, there were 252 House members who voted for then Speaker Alvarez. Am I correct?
If the record shows so, Mister Speaker, that may be correct.
So if we have 292 members of the House, then there were 40 who did not vote for the Speaker, for Speaker Alvarez then. Am I correct, Mister?
That's logical enough, Mister Speaker.
No. Two weeks ago, as I've cited, 184 out of the 292 House members voted for Speaker GMA. How many did not vote for Speaker GMA?
That may compute, that can be computed, Mister Speaker.
Uh, can you compute it?
It's only a matter of, it's a subtraction, Mister Speaker. The operation is subtraction and you have 292 minus 184, then you get the number.
The number is 108.
It may be so, Mister Speaker.
No, numbers are exact, Mister Speaker. I mean, we learned it from kindergarten.
What is the point, Mister Speaker?
My point is, there were 108 House members who did not vote.
It doesn't make any difference, Mister Speaker, because the rules say that the new Speaker to be able to fill up the vacancy would need only a majority of votes of all the members.
Precisely, Mister Speaker. What I'm pointing at now is again referring the good sponsor to Section 8.
I am not the sponsor, Mister Speaker. It looks like I'm sponsoring the minority leader. I need to correct that, Mister Speaker.
Oh, thank you for that correction, Mister Speaker, because as I understand, during the 2016, we were together then.
I know, I cannot forget that. That's why we became friends.
Yes, because we were the Magnificent Eight then.
You are now the Magnificent Seven. You had a better name.
Okay, Mister Speaker, now, pursuing my line of questioning. In Section 8, we have three characterization of House members. The majority, or those who voted for the Speaker, the minority, who did not vote for the Speaker, and we have this so-called independence. Am I correct?
That is correct, Mister Speaker.
Then can you define who belongs to the independents?
Mister Speaker, if you refer to Rule 8 of our rules, during organizational session, those members who vote for the winning Speaker shall constitute the majority. By implication, those who voted for the losing candidates become members of the minority. The rule, as you will read it, is silent on whether or not there is an automatic membership in the minority in the cases of those abstained from voting or did not vote at all.
So the question of who constitutes the independent?
The independents are the ones who decided not to go to the majority or the minority.
So in that fateful day, two weeks ago, 184 voted for the Speaker, 12 abstained, 3 voted, 4 voted no. So the rest presumably belong to the independents.
Let us wait for the complete process, Mister Speaker, because our rules also provide that members may decide to ship to the majority or vice versa. And on the assumption that the majority will accept them or the minority will accept them, that is the process of switching from one position to another. Meaning, if you are from the majority and for one reason or another you decide to go to the minority, the rules provide that you have to write in writing, you have to write, the majority leader or minority leader, whichever is the case. And if you are accepted, then you become a majority or a minority, whichever is the case. But those members who decide not to go either way, they remain to be independent. That's what the rules say.
So precisely, Mister Speaker, at that time, there were more than, I think, 50 who could be considered independents because they belong neither to the majority or the minority. So they decided to write to the majority.
That is the process, Mister Speaker.
So that is the process. So because Representative Suarez voted for the Speaker, then he should have resigned in the majority and wrote the minority because that is the process.
That is your opinion, because I had explained earlier, that rule only applies when you vote for a Speaker during inaugural session.
Yeah, precisely, because right now you all stated earlier that the process for the independents, which is around more than 50 during that fateful day of replacing the Speaker.
We could not just say that, Mister Speaker, because I don't know the numbers who switch, if there are, from either side. I think we need records to be able to explain better the correct numbers. We cannot speculate as to how many, if ever, switch positions because I, I get the information that some of those who did not vote decided to go to the, to one side.
Precisely, 184 voted for the Speaker.
Switching to the other, so until and unless we are able to get all the names, we will not be in a position to determine the correct number as to who are the independents because we need to know the result. Until this is done, we would not know how to determine which are the members who decided to stay as independent.
I think this is a relevant issue, the numbers, Mister Speaker.
I know your point because if you get a lot of those who remain to be independent, chances are, your name today as Magnificent Seven could probably become Magnificent 77.
Now, my point, Mister Speaker, is there was a significant and relevant reorganization of who the majority, minority, and independents in that recent, well, in the installation of a new Speaker.
But that speaks also, Mister Speaker, the decision of the individual members. So there is not, there is no automatic, like what the other members who interpolated this representation that there is an automatic membership to the majority whenever you voted to the winning Speaker in times of vacancy. So the best argument is your own analysis, that it is not automatic. We need to give time for the process, for all the members to decide where they want to go or whether or not they want to go either side. And after that, we will be able to determine finally, who are the independents.
But again, you said earlier that the independents have to apply with the minority or the majority. Then, if you are with the minority, if you want to go to the majority, you would also apply to the majority.
Let me clear that, Mister Speaker. I'm not talking about the independents writing to the majority or the minority. I said, these members decided to remain as is, neither to the majority nor the minority. We're talking of those who abstained from voting or those who did not vote. So the chances is there of either choosing the majority side or the minority side.
So by now, the House leadership already knows who are the majority and the minority, I presume?
That with finality, I think the process is going on, Mister Speaker. Let me get back to you later if we are able to determine the correct number.
No, no, but you are already acknowledging and saying that the Deputy, that the Majority Leader...
I am acknowledging a process because you cited Rule 8. We cannot discount the possibility that members would go this side or other side. I'm only trying to respond to the scenarios you're creating.
Again, let me go to the journal, in the records, Mister Speaker. The Majority Leader last week said that based on your records, there were already 260 who constituted the majority. And now you're saying that it is still, without finality, without anything, that you don't know whose majority and minority. So I'm confused, Mister Speaker.
No, do not be confused, Mister Speaker.
Because it's in the journal, it's recorded in the journal, Mister Speaker. And if the kind, uh, senior Majority Leader would just look into the journals Wednesday last week, it was stated by the Majority Leader who constitutes the majority and the minority.
That was the count, Mister Speaker, but that does not remain, that number does not remain static because as I have said, our rules provide situations where members can switch sides.
So, so even until now, members can still switch sides? Like Representative De Vera has claimed that they had 14 with him and what you're saying that even the 14, you still don't know if they're with the minority or with the majority? In the same way that Representative Kimbo has 26 confirmed members in his group and you still cannot decide whether the 26 is minority or majority. And it's also very clear that the 14 who belong to the Suarez group and voted for Speaker GMA belongs to the majority.
I cannot see the point, Mister Speaker.
No, the point here, Mister Speaker, is we have to look into the numbers. We have to, to deal with identifying because your premise is that it was only the position of Speaker that was changed and consequently, of course, the Majority Leader. And that there was, there were no changes in the majority and the minority. And now, you are stating that you don't have the numbers to back up who belongs to the minority and the majority. So it means now that we are... it means now that we are floating on air. I mean, we don't know who's the majority and the minority, and the only only name that you could identify is Representative Danny Suarez as the minority.
I did not say anything like that, Mister Speaker. What I'm saying is, you are asking for the numbers of the majority today. I said, I am not in a position to tell you, because I think there is still process that we should wait. This is provided by our rules anyway. If you have 260, you have 200, you have 194, what is your problem, Mister Speaker, your honor? I don't see any, I don't see any problem.
Well, again, as I've said, and it's even your admission, Mister Speaker, that that the minority was not changed, so the, well, the impression or the interpretation of that is that when you say the minority of Danny Suarez, this would refer to the 14 representatives who are with Representative Suarez and voted for GMA, because that is your interpretation, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I think the questions are being mixed up. I didn't say that the group of Mister Suarez switched positions or not. In my speech earlier, what I said, the color or the positions are not sacrificed or not compromised whenever a member votes for a speaker with intention of filling up a vacancy. That was my statement. It should not be taken out of context, Mister Speaker. I did not side with Mister Suarez or the members of his team. All I am trying to say is that every member has that equal right to exercise. In cases of vacancy, they can vote for a speaker without necessarily taking sides or getting into other side. The only reason why I said that there is a process to accommodate situations that even if we are already organized, there are instances when members from other side would go to the other and vice versa. That was my statement.
Mister Speaker, let me read Journal Number Four, dated July 30, 2018. In page five, remarks of Majority Leader Andaya with regards to my parliamentary inquiry regarding who comprises majority and minority. Okay? In response to Representative Villarín's inquiry, Majority Leader Andaya informed the body that the majority block recognizes 260 members as part of the majority, 17 members as part of the minority, 7 from the independent block, 7 from independent Macabayan block, and 1 independent in the name of Representative Tobias Toby M. Chanco, or a total of 292 members. So in our journal, Mister Speaker, there's already these numbers, no? So, but the deputy majority leader is saying that there is still a process. And, well, if that is his interpretation that we are still undergoing a process, then by all means, the majority should not recognize a minority leader in the person of Representative Suarez, precisely because we have a process.
Mister Speaker, I do not dispute the records as written in the journal. I stated that there was, that there is a process because you referred to the rules, particularly Rule Eight. You asked me to define who the members of the majority are and the members of the minority, including the members of the independent who chose not to take side. And so, in replying to you, Mister Speaker, I talk about a process. Because while these numbers are already in the journal, doesn't mean that they will not change. Because, as you know, there are instances when members switch sides. That is the only point, Mister Speaker.
So there was switching of sides when there was an election of a new speaker?
Mister Speaker, it was already decided and ruled, and the majority leader said that these are the numbers. Let's take it at that, Mister Speaker, that was borne out by the journal. There is no need to debate on that. They might change later on, subject to the process of maybe 1 or 2 switching sides. I don't see any problem there, Mister Speaker, Your Honor.
So you are now admitting that indeed there's a reconstitution of who the majority and minority, if we look at the numbers, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, if only 1 member switched to the minority and the number... the majority number is 147, as you said. So, kung alimba, 260 na 'yung majority, dalawa pumunta sa minority, that doesn't change the fact that the majority still holds the number, Mister Speaker, Your Honor.
And there would be a hypothetical situation again, that if indeed there's 1 or 2 difference between majority and minority...
But that does not settle the issue of minority, Mister Speaker, that's why, from the beginning, I made a statement that it was the position of the majority leader to recognize the Honorable Suarez based on record. And based on the numbers that you cited as written in the journal, that doesn't make any difference now.
So, again, going back to your statement that there is still an ongoing process of constituting the majority and minority. Can you elucidate, explain to us how that process will happen?
Mister Speaker, Your Honor, I'm not sure where gentleman is getting at, because we just talked about this process, because it is in the rules. We can give flash to this process if we can see that there are members going from one side to another, and that is still part of democracy. But that doesn't relate to the issue of the position taken by the majority on July 30, 2018. This is the only point that we have stressed from the beginning. And this representation explained that position in that earlier speech.
Well, again, I'm raising this issue because it's, again, important, no? Because, again, the election of the new speaker in the person of Speaker GMA garnered 184 votes. In the previous 2016, when we constituted the House, the speaker got 252 votes, then 8 more joined the majority, so it's 260. Now, I'm precisely pointing this out, because there's a big difference between the 184 and the 252. And if we look deeper into these numbers, we could say that there indeed has been a reorganization of who belongs to the minority and to the majority. That's why this representation is asking for the specifics. And when you mentioned that there is still an ongoing process, then let us respect that process, no? Because right now, there are 2 groups who are vying for the minority post, and it is on record that 26 House members have signified and elected Representative Kimbo as their minority leader. Then there are 14, 14 who decided to elect Representative Rivera as their minority leader. So given all this factual factual issues at hand, which we cannot dismiss, no? We cannot dismiss these numbers and just point out that it's the group of Representative Suarez who is the minority. Because indeed, there is this manifestation, and it's based on submitted records with the Speaker of the House. So again, when you're telling us about a process, the question is, what is the process that the senior majority leader is referring to? How will these groups resolve the issue of minority?
Mister Speaker, it is very clear that what this representation explained is only in relation to the matter of, or the act done by the majority leader in recognizing the Honorable Suarez as the minority leader. It doesn't matter, Your Honor, if there is a wide discrepancy between the election 2 years ago and the election that transpired 2 weeks ago. They are not connected, Mister Speaker. You know the process, Mister Speaker, Your Honor. If the contending parties would refer kindly to the rules, if you wanted to go to the minority, somebody should write to the minority leader. And that is the process, then you can be identified with the minority. By the rules, it says that, well, if you want to be identified with the majority, you write to the majority leader. That is the process. One cannot be identified in the minority until and unless you write a formal letter, and on the assumption that you are accepted, you become a minority leader. Why don't you write, for example, to the minority leader in your case, and you probably can be accepted? And if there are a lot of members in the minority, as a matter of fact, you can change the minority leader based on the rules. The minority leader can be changed anytime, like the majority leader. And so you will have not, you will no longer have a problem, if you want to change... Of course, this is a matter can be traced from among yourselves and the minority and independent, and it is the position of the majority not to meddle into the intramurals and dynamics of the minority. But you cannot begin a process until and unless you are formally identified with one side. And the process we're talking about is under Section Eight. So, how can this issue be settled if the minority issue is not resolved? We cannot resolve it outside this August Hall, because we're compromising the reputation, the integrity, even the duties of the individual members.
As I have stated, Mister Speaker, that we are not compromising the integrity, but rather respecting the process, that's why this representation, when it did not, when I did not participate in the voting of that fateful night in the election of the new speaker, I applied to the minority of Representative Kimbo. In the same way that those who identified themselves then as the majority led by former Speaker Alvarez and former Majority Leader Fariñas also applied to be with the minority under Representative Rivera. So, in effect, we complied with all this process. We complied with the interpretation of how the minority should be constituted, although the 2 groups have different interpretations and recognition of who the minority leader is, no? On one hand, those who are the retentionist, so meaning the 17 previously identified or recognized as the minority, only 1 remained with the minority, and that is Senior Deputy Minority Leader Rivera, so they applied to him, no? But given that, of the 17, only 1 remained with the minority, our position then is that with the 16 going to the majority and 14 even voted for the speaker, then that minority has been obliterated, and there needs to be a reconstitution of the minority in the House. And again, when you talk about minority, this is, again, about numbers who did not vote nor have the intention to join the majority. So, these are these are at least 40 representatives that have decided not to be with the majority, albeit on different arguments or positions. But it is very clear that you have a significant number of House members that have declared their intention that they have decided to be minority and explicitly is not part of the majority, because in the first place, they did not vote for the winning speaker. And that is very clear in Section Eight of our rules, Mister Speaker. And that is the point of really looking at the numbers. So, so when you say there should be a process, I think both groups have complied with that process, and I don't see why the deputy, Senior Deputy Majority Leader would say otherwise, Mister Speaker.
I'm not saying otherwise, Mister Speaker. The problem of the gentleman is that he wrote to the person who claims that he's the minority leader. Like the Honorable Rivera, who is my friend, he also claims to be the minority leader. That's not the way to process the problem, Mister Speaker. You have to write to the minority, the majority leader, on record. And on record, it is still the Honorable Daniel Suarez, that was the position taken by the majority leader. So it doesn't matter, Mister Speaker, if you wrote officially the person who thought that he is the deserving minority leader. That will put into question also the claim of Honorable Rivera, because to him, he's the legitimate minority leader. And therefore, if this is the process, we're not resolving this, unfortunately for the minority. That's why I am suggesting, Your Honor, Mister Speaker, that you really wanted to participate in a process. And if you don't, if you do not want the present minority leader and you want to elect one, you can change the minority leader, but first, you should become a member of the minority. This is the process this recognized by the House, Mister Speaker.
Well, we're already begging the question, Mister Speaker, but again, as I pointed out, we have at least 40 House members who have expressly signified that they don't belong to the majority. And the House should not just dismiss these numbers, because these are representatives of their corresponding legislative districts and also representatives of party list groups who have a national constituency. And by that, Mister Speaker, I implore the House that we should not be just interpreting the rules based, no? On, based on the, well, on the literal interpretation of that section or even the issue of... or even the issue of just relating this as a vacancy in the seat of the speaker. But rather, you have at least specific numbers and significant numbers in the House of Representatives that have indeed said that they don't want to belong to the majority. And if the group of Representative Suarez will decide to resign from the majority because they voted for the speaker, apply with the minority group, regardless of it be Representative Rivera or Representative Kimbo, then by all means, they can start that process of resigning from the majority and apply to whoever group, either the group of Representative Rivera or the group of Representative Kimbo. Then after applying, all of us would settle who should be the minority leader in a collective manner that would befit the tradition of this August chamber, Mr. Speaker.
That is precisely the point, Mr. Speaker. The point being raised by the Honorable Gentleman, Your Honor, is still in the matter of deciding among themselves the minority leader. But unfortunately, the majority leader already recognized Mr. Danny Suarez as the minority leader. The correct procedure, Your Honor, is what the rules state. If they wanted to be identified in the minority, they will simply write the letter formally asking to be accepted in the minority. And on the assumption that the minority leader will accept them, they become members of the minority. And if there is a change in the minority leadership, it can be effected that way. Not in a manner of claiming it. And there were two other claimants to the position. This is something that cannot be resolved using the same process, Mr. Speaker. That is why, in my speech, we're compromising the integrity and the reputation of the House, including its works and the very duties that the members have sworn to. This is the dilemma of the minority, Mr. Speaker. I think they can process it within the realms of our rules. And they know that the rules, the rules are very clear, Mr. Speaker.
Well, again, that's the interpretation of the majority leader. But I recognize that he did not refute me on my points, on the factual points, that indeed there are 40 House members, at least 40 House members who have expressly publicly manifested to be with the minority. Whether it belongs to one group or two groups, while it is relevant, but the relevant point here is that 40 have signified not to be with the majority. And if, and so, when the group of Representative Suarez would decide, then I think they're open to join with the 40 in a discussion about resolving who should be minority. Be that as it may, my next question, again, because you earlier said that the House should tackle important issues, legislation, and, of course, these are issues in which there should be a clear distinction who would position for the majority and who would position for the minority. And I'm saying this because, again, in parliamentary tradition, the minority is always regarded as the opposition. It's not because you oppose for opposing sake, but there are very specific policies. Either you want these policies to be improved, you want it blocked, you want it amended. This is the role of a fiscalizing opposition. And it's very clear that even in the tradition of parliaments, when the majority and minority was first determined, it was very clear that there's the left and the right. Those who belong to the right are with the majority. Those who want to go to the left are the minority. And that has been the tradition in parliament. So, meaning, when you talk about the minority position, it's a collective position. And I'm just saying that for the sake of democracy and for the sake of our people, then by all means, let's have a working, critical, and independent minority. And with that, I would say that it's high time that the majority recognizes that indeed it is timely, it is relevant, that a working minority, a critical and independent minority would be given a chance to discuss matters of policy that in a way would reflect, no? Thinking that opposite or, let me say, issues that have bearing but in a way is not aligned with the position of the majority.
Mr. Speaker, I hope I can answer that. But the question points to the very credibility, reliability, or even the competence of a minority leader. We cannot process that, Mr. Speaker. All what we are trying to resolve here is the recognition of Mr. Danny Suarez as the minority leader. Whether or not the Honorable Gentleman does not believe that Mr. Suarez is not competent enough or whether or not he believes that the other claimants are better minority leader, that is not for this representation to make a statement, Mr. Speaker.
Well, last week, there was an allusion by the majority leader that this fight of the minority is all about he likened this to the various claimants of the West Philippine Sea. And by likening it to to the claimants, it might have a ring of truth to it, no? As one of the claimants or rather interloper is China. And I do believe that China here is the majority's minority. In your case, sir, I would also say that it's very clear in our rules, in jurisprudence, and in tradition that the one declared by the UN Tribunal, Arbitral Tribunal, to be the winner in this case would be the group of Representative Kimbo, if that is the allusion being made by the majority leader. And likewise, he likened this as a fight with the blue, red, and yellow. But again, it was cleared by the good senior deputy majority leader that indeed, hindi ito away ng dilawan at ng pulahan, no? Dahil nga, again, I'd like to remind this August body, well, there is this song by Buklod, "Tak Tatsulok", hindi pulat dilaw ang tunay na magkalaban, ang kulay at tatak ay di siyang dahilan. Hangga't marami ang lugmok sa kahirapan at ang hustisya ay para lang sa mayaman. Habang may tatsulok at sila ang nasa tuktok, di matatapos itong gulo. And with that, Mr. Speaker, good senior deputy majority leader, I end my interpretation.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
There seems to be recognize the request of the lady.
Move to suspend the proceedings, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend the interpolation of this representation in order that we recognize the guest of the Honorable Bingbong Crisologo.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, your request that we acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Bingbong Crisologo in the persons of Ms. Diana Alteya Kiyaman from Barangay Bagong Silangan, Quezon City.
Please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
With that, Mr. Speaker, we move to adjourn until tomorrow, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Session is adjourned to resume tomorrow at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.